Okay. Welcome all to the June 27 meeting of the Sturbridge Planning Board. The first order will be to approve the minutes of May 9. We have no A and Rs, I don't believe, Jean?
No, we do not.
Okay, at 6:35 we have a public hearing for the Sturbridge Senior Center at 480 Main Street. This is a site plan and special permit request. At 6:45 we have a public hearing from Mike Chesler, trustee of 150 Charlton Road, site plan review. After that, we'll have reorganization of the board, town planning update, old and new business, and adjournment after that. And I'd like to welcome two new members to the planning board this evening. It's Dave Boarbo and Taylor Steadman. Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of May 9?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions, comments? If not, motion to approve as submitted?
So moved.
So moved, Sue, second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? So we have, I guess we should have five in favor and two.
Five, yeah.
To abstain.
To abstain.
Okay. We have a few minutes, Jean, if you want to start.
Um, starting the update? Sure. All right, I don't know. What time does that start? 6:35? I don't have time to go over Noble. Just an announcement, Habitat for Humanity is accepting applications for the home at 226 Cedar Street. That's the affordable housing unit that the town partnered with Habitat to construct, and it's nearing complete. We're hoping people be able to move in potentially in August. So we did put all of the income guidelines and the application on our website. There are a couple of information sessions still coming up. I would encourage anyone that knows anyone that needs an affordable housing unit or may have an interest to please go on the website, get the information, attend the session, see if you might qualify. It's a fantastic opportunity for someone to own their own home in town.
Right. The one we did before on Fairview Park Road, we already had the owner during the construction. Is it a different process?
Yeah, so they have to give 500 hours of sweat equity, but what they've been doing now is they have so many other projects ongoing that they're able to select the family a little later in the process. But you're right, we did it much earlier in the process, and I think with this home too, we had so many delays because of COVID. I think our completion date, it was kind of a moving target as we went along. So I think ideally, the family would have been selected sooner in the process so they could contribute their 500 hours in sweat equity. So I think that there will still be opportunity for them to put in some sweat equity in this home or another one, so it's a great opportunity.
Pretty good.
Something real quick?
Sure.
Yeah. So August 15th is Sturbridge takes over the Woo Socks. So we're hoping people from Sturbridge can attend with their families. And for everybody that attends from Sturbridge, a percentage $2 of their ticket price goes to support our youth Little League, and so it's a really good cause. At the end of the season, whichever town has the most people attend on their take overnight, will get a trophy and special recognition, so I'm hoping it's extra contributions. It is a planning board meeting night, so we will need to change our meeting night, and I hope all of you can attend with your families. Janaye is singing the National Anthem.
I would definitely be there.
So that's worth the price of admission anyway, because she's a wonderful singer, and it should be a good night. So I gave you the link so you can go on and order tickets.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Jean. Do you want to read the announcement for the?
Sure. In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 27, 2023, at 6:35 PM in the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., or by virtual means if circumstances warrant, in accordance with the applicable law. On the application of the ICON architecture representing the town of Sturbridge for this property location is 480 Main Street. The applicant requests site plan approval as required by the Sturbridge zoning bylaw Article.
18.
Site plan review to allow the renovation of and construction of, in addition to the senior center and related site improvements at 480 Main Street, Sturbridge, as shown on the plans and materials submitted. Additionally, the applicant is requesting a special permit as required by the Sturbridge zoning bylaw, Chapter 300, Article 5, Groundwater Protection District, to allow a use that will render more than 15% of 2,500 square feet of the lot impervious, whichever is greater. The project as designed results in .92 acres of impervious area. A copy of the site plan and application can be inspected on the Sturbridge Town website Or arrangements can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508, or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted in person and may be conducted via remote means if circumstances warrant, in accordance with applicable law. This means the members of the public body, as well as members of the public, may access this meeting in purpose, in person, or via virtual means at global.gotomeeting.com/join/472675877. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best effort, we will post the town's website, an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, and I'd also like to disclose that I am the chairman of the Senior Center Building Committee. I don't believe that creates a conflict, but I thought I ought to disclose it anyway. So I'll turn it over now to Mark, and you'd like to introduce yourselves and present.
So I'm Jacob Murray from Warnerfield Design Group. We're the civil engineer and landscape architect on the project. This is Mark McKennick from Icon. They're the architects. I guess I'll probably take the lead here just because it's more site-related items that we'll be discussing. So it's for a site plan review for, in addition to the existing building at 480 Main Street, the senior center. So this is the existing additions. If you can see in the kind of faint survey outline, the general building is surrounded by parking and pavement with about somewhere between 20 and 40 feet, depending on the location. Oh, yeah. And then with wooded areas to the back and to the east, which is the north, and to the east, and then lawn areas with some concrete slabs that used to be something, I think, something else, to the south area. This is, you know, next one, that's site prep and demo. So this is the general proposed layout. The hope is to put the addition in the back while maintaining the existing structure in the front, and that would be the rear addition. The addition requires more parking, and so we're going from 49 to, I think, 28 to 49 spaces with spaces in the rear, moving the spaces that were on the sides of the building to the rear and the front. The rear is great because we're able to shield that in general from the side of the building, while also it provides an access lane to the dumpster in the rear, as well as for loads, pickups, and deliveries of large site that needs to facilitate the building. There's also a drop-off to the western side at the building where vehicles, or if necessary, can go up to the front door and drop, particularly this first senior center, can let people out who might have significant accessibility issues. In the front of the building, we have our, most of our parking, where we've done an angled parking in order to kind of minimize the space on both sides, so one-way circle to go through there, as well as snow storage to the east and west of the site. And then there's, to the west, there are two entrances, both which will be two-way, and that way we're able to get, if you just need to go to the front entrance, you can go in and out there, and you don't have to go to the back. And that likewise in the back, particularly if you're just dropping something off, a load or a pedestrian, or if you're the dumpster people, you can just come in and out without having to disturb the rest of the site. Accessible parking is both in the front and in the rear, depending on where your needs are for accessing the building. So, and then I'll go one more thing. We are moving the generator from the western side of the building to up front for better access off of the new parking lot, and this will be screened, we can show you later on in the landscaping drawing from view from Main Street. Just other one, the high is the Snellville School Memorial is going to be maintained. That's over in the lower right-hand corner. That will be maintained and updated with some new plantings to spruce that up as well as part of the project. Obviously, increasing impervious area in the groundwater protection district, we had to provide treatment and infiltration of the water to not increase the runoff for the, up to the 100-year storm. And so for that, we have a series of catch basins, deep sub catch basins, proprietary particle separators to get out more fines, and then ultimately infiltration chambers in both the rear and the front to get out the particular fines through infiltration before it's able to enter the groundwater. And that's done also with the overflows that'll go into the wooded area if, you know, during the storm events that would require overflow needs. The, I'll also highlight here, the eastern side, which is between the hotel in the property next, where is vegetated, and we're going to maintain that vegetation. And then in the northern side, where we're going up against a budding residential property, there'll be a six-foot-high fence that'll be put there along the property line to screen them from the parking that will be going in. Next one. This is the general grading plan. Just shows that the parking, in order to, currently, the, in the rear, it's rather level. We don't have to do a whole lot of grading to make, to maintain that level, grading, which is why it's a good place for parking. In the front, it slopes off significantly, and so in order to, in order to make it level and accessible for passengers and pedestrians, there does have to be some fill brought in, and then drops off more afterwards into the existing lawn area, where if we go to the next slide, we can show that, where the plantings can be provided as well, that will meet the landscaping requirements. And this is both the 5% island requirement with landscaping, as well as the street tree requirements along Main Street and Arnold Road that are required by the regulations.
Okay. I think at this time.
Yeah. So.
I'll call in, so should we do?
That's about the end of the general plans. We meet lighting requirements.
The meeting is not being broadcast.
Okay, so maybe we ought to let.
Okay.
Bruce, no. So this might be trying to bring up the fact that we're actually planning on changing some of this idea with that.
You want to go back to the stormwater?
Stormwater, yeah. Is everyone, well, maybe everyone is aware, the bids came in pretty high on this thing, and we are in the process of reviewing how to save some money and reduce the cost. And one of the options is to switch from these underground chambers to more rain garden, retention ponds, so forth. I don't know if you have anything?
Yeah, we're in early stages of design for that, obviously, but the idea would be, if you wanted to scroll down a little bit, Mark, would be, there is some lawn area between the street trees and the edge of the parking, where if we took this underground storage out from underneath the parking, we can put that above ground, and we'd have to create a berm before we get to the street trees and the street, that would main, that would hold the water in as a detention retention pond, and then with an overflow to a similar area. Another option that has also been discussed is potentially going into the wooded area, which we require, along the eastern side, where we'd remove the trees and put a long detention pond there as well, or in place of the one along the street, so. And the savings is basically, you don't have to do all the excavation, you don't have as much material. There is some regrading that's going to be necessary for the pond, but it's not full of chambers and stone, which is tough.
There will also be, in terms of other potential changes that we're looking at, we're looking at eliminating this areaway that will house the mechanical equipment and provide a simple railing around that connects to the screened fenced dumpster area, and then have concrete pads built into the hill that will facilitate the mechanical equipment. The savings there is to eliminate a couple of retaining walls, and we're also minimizing or lessening, I think, the overall impervious area.
Which will help with the stormwater somewhat.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, you can go.
The ponds, I think, in the front or along the side, and along the side, you'd have to remove trees and vegetation there.
Correct.
And we're putting trees and vegetation in, but we have to remove it for the pond itself, so the.
No, these are existing trees that would come.
Yes, I understand. I understand. So, and that, that line of vegetation that we have going between the senior center and the hotel would now be wide open now?
Exactly, yes. Although there might, yeah, there might be a few, most of the vegetation is on the town side, there's maybe a few trees on the hotel side. So I don't know if it'd be necessarily clear cut, but there'd be definitely a much.
Oh, yeah. But that's an option, as opposed to going in the front.
Correct.
And the front is there. So it's, whatever's going to be aesthetically pleasing for the front, if the front can look great from the street.
Yeah.
Or to have views of senior center over to the hotel, because I don't think we even think of a fence going in between the two.
Yeah. I mean, a fence could be provided, obviously, that's an additional cost. It also would be, I don't think a fence would actually be all that helpful, because the parking lot slopes down about six feet, and then you put a six-foot-high fence, and basically you're looking over top of the fence.
Exactly. So I just, we're putting in a whole bunch of trees to give it a nice, a nice look from the street. So, and that's going to work out well. I just didn't, I didn't want to think about taking down all those trees along the side there, but I understand what we have to do, and we got two choices there. So I just wanted clarification, and thank you.
Yeah, the plan is to, you know, continue this hearing. I think Jean has talked to them about it some times, you know, get the final, you know, plans after these redesigns are done, depending on what really works and what they end up doing. So the idea for this is to really get an idea of the rest of the whole thing, the parking and all the other things that come up on this.
We have several.
I can tell you, one other just thing to note, in case it comes up, is the existing water line lateral for 4 Arnold Road comes off of the main that goes through the site, and so that's actually going to be removed, because, and it's going to go straight, the town's going to connect it straight to their house, as most everybody else is, and is better practice than having a line coming off in private, in private property, so. Just if you're wondering why there's a new water line to be buttered as part of this project.
Which isn't actually part of the project.
That'll actually be.
Providing that.
Okay, exactly, yeah. So it's not part of the bided project, yes, but nevertheless, it'll be done.
So is there more presentation on this?
That's, I think that's the general layout of.
We could have questions then from the board and so forth. Dane, do you have any, some comments or questions?
I got a couple of questions. My first thought when I saw these plans was that underground system's going to be expensive. I, this isn't super pertinent to this, but why didn't we look at a berm in an above-ground pond in the first place? Do you have any idea about that?
Well, I mean, it was, it was definitely contemplated in our discussions. Obviously, the nice thing about the underground structure is that it's not a pond in front of the building, or taking out the trees to the right. Both options, although doable, have certain aesthetics detractions to them. The one, as we discussed, would take down a lot of the trees. The other one's going to be a pond in the front, and even though it'll be screened with street trees, it'll still be, you know, an open pond and berm there, system that doesn't have the same natural feel as the existing lawn that we have there, so.
Before I saw these plans, I had thought you were just going to put a pond there. I think that's going to look just fine, for my personal opinion of aesthetics, but that doesn't really matter. On this sheet right here, for pavement markings, when you come in on the first intersection and you take a right, like you're coming up Arnold, you enter in, and you take a right, now you want to go straight. You don't want to take another right.
Correct, and there'll be signs there, and if on the layout plan, I think it shows there's a do not enter sign.
Okay.
And then it's a, it's a one-way loop around the parking, and that helped us to reduce impervious in that area, so.
Because of the one-way?
Yeah, if you go two-way, you got to be, you have to be wider.
So, and is that two do not enter signs on both sides of the 16-foot one-way, or it'd just be the one? And could we add a crossbar, so if you're looking down and you don't see the signage?
If you want to go back to, I think, 03, I think there's just one. I don't think we have one on the island, so it's just if you take a, if you're taking a right, there's a do not enter sign.
And I know there's going to be a tree there, though, where you would put the other do not enter sign.
Yes.
What do you think about like a painted stop bar, kind of, without the word stop, but like that painted horizontal?
Bar?
You know, so when your eye's looking at the gray, and you're just kind of dupity-dup, you kind of see that big white, hey, don't come this way?
Yeah.
That's just my thought, because I'm not sure I would see that.
See a sign.
Don't keep turning right sign, but that was my first comment. A little bit, right, actually, that's perfect, where it says transition curb, so I assume that whole head-in row is zero reveal, because it's going to have just sheet flow to the grass?
So, no, that, that's actually going to have to, that'll be an actual curb, because the, the water's going to be coming down the pavement, and we need to stop it in order to get it into the catch basins. So those catch basins are at the low points, it hits the curb, it goes into there, and that, that way we can collect it. If we, if we sheet flowed on the grass, it would be unfortunately too much water, and the volume would just run off the grass into the sidewalk and significant storms.
And then, so the single line on the right-hand side, that indicates just the edge of the pavement, no curb?
That's just the edge of the pavement, yeah. And that, but nevertheless, that pavement will be sloped in, so it wouldn't, so there'll be minimum runoff there, but it'll mostly going into the.
Would there be a guide rail along that area?
None, none is proposed, right now.
Okay. And I guess I'll leave that alone, because who knows what that's going to look like in the future? All right. Jason. One thing I noticed on the stormwater, which I won't spend too much time on, because I know it's changing, but it looked like a lot of the discharges called out for riprap, but, I mean, the one roof drain is pointed right at the generator, and then the other one with the contours, I'm kind of wondering if we're going to flood out our neighbor, if we have like a swale on our property, or if those contours kind of push it towards them. I just, when you're looking at those discharges when this gets redesigned, it's just two things that jumped out at me.
Yeah. I believe they're both, the one on the north is actually, will go to an existing swale that's in the woods, and should be, of what comes of it, and I want to reiterate, those are overflows, so in, based on the calculations, those are having, sending less water than is currently being sent from the site now. So that one will go to the swell. The other one, I believe we grade it so, but we'll take a look, so that actually, even though it's sent towards the generator, it will go around the generator.
Perfect. And then for that generator, you had mentioned screening. I'm not sure that I saw any. Is there any?
In the landscape.
Is there like a fence or something?
Yeah. In the landscape, it's not a fence, but there is vegetation in the landscape, so it's, we can't screen the rear, because that has to be there for access. In order to necessarily, well, for people in the senior center, they might like it, but it needs to be, stay there for access. And so we use the Snellville Memorial with putting another large deciduous tree there for the screening.
Okay, so screened behind that little area. I got you.
Yeah.
And again, maybe that'll need to change, if you put a basin up front. TBD.
Yeah, depends on the size of the basin.
All right. Did you guys think about any permeable asphalt or pavers? I was thinking about best places to put them. I didn't find any good thoughts, because if you do permeable asphalt, I'm sure the town doesn't have a back truck. If you do permeable pavers, you try to do a lot of ADA grades for the use case here. It's a little hard to maintain.
That's.
Any ideas?
You've kind of, you've kind of answered the question in a lot of ways. You're right, Tim, I acknowledge this town does not have a back truck that'll, that's required to clean impervious pavement, or you have non-pervious pavement in five years. And then the pavers, given the seniors that are here, that even if we can get it level at the beginning, it's, we've seen too many places where you just can't control the frost heaves, and it doesn't get bad necessarily, but when you're looking at a population that particularly is susceptible to tripping, you don't want to, you don't want to go in that direction.
So are you guys going to try to put a few like pocket rain gardens around to steal the hardtop where you can, instead of just doing one big hole in the ground?
That's a potential, yeah, as we look into that.
Because there's like a lot of breaks on this property, even though the whole thing kind of sheet flows, it's, my takeaway was it's just a little bit of wasted space with that garden area. It's like an L-shaped building, but maybe that's a potential area.
There are some, kind of, in the planting, kind of, their garden areas, what the senior center wants to do with that is kind of what it's designed right for right now, so.
But hopefully you can take some of that roof drainage and just shunt it right into something that keeps the volume out of the bigger thing in the front.
That's a possibility.
Awesome. Those are all my thoughts. Thank you, Charlie.
Great, thank you. Wally?
Awesome. Sue? I just have a couple of questions. We're going from, let's see, the drainage from the impervious surface, what we currently have, to .92. What we currently have, is that in addition, is it 42 or?
I believe it's, it's 40, .48 to .92 acres, so it's about, yeah, 11,000 square feet.
Additional?
Yes, additional.
11,000 square feet, okay. And I agree with what Dane has submitted, because the, when I, what I understand, that system for overflow of water, for the stormwater, I don't understand, though, why it has to go through filtration.
The, so.
System in order to meet up with the rest of the groundwater.
We have to, the regulations require us to both store water, so we don't send more water onto, away from the site than currently sent, but we also have to treat it. There's both a recharge requirement and a water quality requirement, and there's a DEP standard that 80% total suspended solids have to be removed, and so that's what the deep sub catch basins are for. They do part of that job. Then there's proprietary separators that basically use centrifugal force to get out some other particles. And then the infiltration itself, and a lot of your septic systems, if you're any on septic, work this way, will infiltrate, as the water goes through the soil, particles get taken out as well, and it goes into the groundwater.
Seems like an overkill.
It's.
It's just the regulations.
It's pretty standard.
It's just the regulations. Well, we need to pay attention to regulations when they're made, who makes them. But, so it is being considered to put a pond in the front?
Correct, yeah.
As well as one on the side, or instead of one?
We're in the early stages of design, and to decide whether, and working with the senior center to decide which, where it will go. It should only have to be one, I think either on, in the front or on the sides, but as I said, it's, it's in early stages in design.
Okay. The other thing, when you talk about the gradient, the parking lot, is the parking lot parallel with the building? Or do they have, or is there a hill, an incline, or steps that you need to go up to get?
No, for the first floor, it's, it's level, in the sense that it's graded as accessible, which means under 5%, and then for handicap spots, under 2%. If you go back to, if you go to the grading plan, actually, next sheet, so the, if there's a straight walk, walkability from the parking spaces all the way to the new, to the new addition, to the front area there, the, it's already elevated, so there will be stairs there that will be redone, but that's.
Very front.
In the very front, yeah.
So we have the side entrance.
Will be right up to the door, yeah.
What about the parking down here in the front of the building?
So they'll, they'll be able to get out of their parking spaces, and then you see the front entrance on the existing building. If you go to the right, there's, it's less than 5% right to the front door there.
It is less than 5%.
Yes, yeah, so no stairs.
Or all that, all that area?
Yep.
That's why the fill.
That is why the fill, yeah. We could definitely, if we had, and I don't think that's really a design possibility, but if we did have steps, we could, we could definitely probably mitigate the fill, but then it wouldn't, it wouldn't serve the function.
For the population that needs access.
Yeah.
Because I did have a question about the number of handicap spots. Even though it's regulated how many you need, I would think that at a facility like this, you should have more marked spots.
And that.
Saved for those who need it to access the building, because not all disabilities are visible, you know, and so there's a lot of people with. are visible, you know, and so there's a lot of people with invisible disabilities that would benefit from more parking, handicap parking.
We def, I mean, that's, we definitely could stripe more, that's up to the senior center as well, and if they want to add more. Obviously, you, if you stripe it with the aisle in between, which is what's required if you call it a handicap spot, then you're gonna start to lose parking spaces. There might be something where you call it not necessarily officially accessible spots, but reserved spots where they could put it next to it, so it's not, doesn't have the aisle next to it, 'cause the driver doesn't necessarily need it.
The van.
Yeah.
It just needs a parking spot close to the entrance.
It is true, and there is always a little bit of trickiness in the sense that there's, not everybody needs the accessible spot, accessibility, but it doesn't mean that there, that's not, everyone's also not the same, and that they can park a mile away and walk to the site.
Correct. My point, you got it.
Yes.
So, see what you can do about that to take care of everyone who wants to access that facility.
One thing I will mention, though, is whether they're signed or striped or otherwise, the topography, the smoothness, it'll all be, I think, very accessible.
The smoothness.
Regardless of what...
I'm just thinking a location...
Totally agree with you about signage, I guess.
Yes.
To your point, it's regulatory, if the owner, the senior center chooses to do more, they can buy more signs and label them whatever they want, but...
And they don't have to be accessible. They don't have to have the...
Like regulatory, like ADA, yeah.
They just have to have a parking spot.
But even if these guys don't change anything, all those spaces that are next to them, they'll still be very easy for people to access.
But like was mentioned, it's quite a distance from the parking lot to the door because of that garden area.
Yeah. There is...
Yeah, I don't know, I don't really think that's gonna change, though.
Yeah, it'll be, I mean...
Well, they, it would be best for people with limitations, would be the back to have just the signage, not accessible, not special lining, just a sign for...
And that's something that the...
Cap people.
If it's just a sign, that's also something that the senior center could add, you know, two, five years from now, as they start to realize where they need it best as well.
That's very good. Anything else, Sue?
I was, I'm curious about the square footage of the new building that'll be accessible to seniors.
So, the addition of the building to the existing is 8,000 square feet. The total square footage is about 16,000 square feet. That does include 3,000-square-foot basement in the existing building. So, really, the programmable square footage is more around 13,000 square feet.
And I know we won't be using the basement on the existing building.
Right.
And we will be using the first floor, which will be in line with the new...
Yes, the construction, the new construction is aligned to the floors of the existing building.
And there's a first and second floor?
There is a small second-floor portion in the new building that is the puzzle overlook, and it looks over the lounge area.
And who was involved with design of that building, the new building?
New building, I was, Icon Architecture.
Oh, okay.
Along, I mean, with the building committee and Leslie.
I'm just curious, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, no, no, no.
'Cause I've seen the pictures, and it seems just like a lot of wasted space. The second floor for the puzzles, is there an elevator to get to that second floor in the new building?
Yeah, we're retaining the existing elevator and stair that go up to the, that go...
From the old building?
Yeah.
There's not gonna be a new elevator in the new building?
No. No. The second-floor portion that's in the new building is very small. Most of the second floor is being reused in the existing building.
Right.
I mean, actually, you know, when, you know, it does meet the...
I'm sure.
The program needs that originally came out from the town's approval, and so, I mean, most of the spaces, you know, certainly, you know, designed to meet those needs, so it might seem like empty spaces, really does have a use that has been programmed in there.
I'm sure. I just wanted to ask the question.
We did start out with a bigger, you know, addition initially, but it was scaled down even before the actual biz went out to show that we had to get more into the price range that we needed to be in, based on the money that was approved by the town.
All right. Would it be possible, possibly another 30 years to put a second floor on there? Is that something that could be...
It's anything possible, but I don't think it's planned. I don't think it's anything you may allow for.
It's not planned, but it took 30 years to get this far out. I'm just thinking the next 30.
It would be, the head clearances at the south side would not be there, but at the north side, that may be possible.
I'm just curious, 'cause it just seemed like not a lot of additional space for the price, and I'm just, was, needed to ask those questions. I thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
No, most of that.
Great. Taylor, do you have any questions, comments?
You had just briefly mentioned about the basement, that it wasn't going to be used for anything?
Well, it will be used for things like mechanical, electrical, town storage, that type of thing.
So, where's the access to the basement? Is it just stairwell, or is there exterior?
It will remain as-is, so the elevator goes down and the stair, the rear stair goes down as well.
Just in terms of like fire code? I'm just curious what there is in terms of accessing any of that mechanical equipment that's down.
Yeah, it's, so it's deemed a storage area, and it has, it only requires one means of egress from that.
Okay.
So...
All right, thank you. Brett?
The only, my more comments than kind of a question on it, as far as, and we keep talking about the other options, as far as the water runoff and drainage from the impermeable surfaces, that's something that comes back through once a redesign is done, right? So, really, we're talking, what we have here. And I think that, you know, from this perspective, I like that. I'm not sure I like the visual of it as much with a berm in front, that kind of plan, but I think that this makes sense from the path that you have here. Is the number of parking spots, like the minimum requirement we have, is that something that's set in gold?
So, in the commercial tourist district, it is in the bylaw that same or similar continued uses don't require an increase. Basically, what we've done is increased to the extent possible with the property that we own, so we don't really, same as this building, we have, I think, 10 parking spaces for this entire building, so we are, it is a good increase. We are building also the town parking lot at 501 Main Street, and not ideal, but, you know, if they were having a big event, maybe even council staff could take up a couple of parking spaces in the parking lot and walk over. And I know we also have some neighborhood agreements there with overflow parking, so, you know, to answer your question, no, we don't. We looked at the number of people that are typically there on any given day for any particular program or for the lunchtime, and we do believe that we can accommodate, certainly, we'll do a much better job accommodating than we are now. And then, also, just to kinda weigh in on the handicap accessible spaces, as someone who's there a lot for programs and speaking, those aren't necessarily the first parking spots that are filled, so I think the idea of waiting until they get in there and see how the programs are running, but I agree with you, it might be that, you know, I don't know, the Hubbardston Senior Center has reserved for those 80-plus, or you know what I mean? So, it might be that they add some additional, but the parking is difficult in this district in general.
If we're discussing the impermeable surfaces, which is, leads to the drainage, right, is there an ability that we can back off on some of the parking, but stop in that?
Probably not, yeah. Right, yeah. Yeah.
Dave, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, probably two points, two questions. One would be what the hydrologist's estimate came back, and where the water table is currently on that, and to the current detention system, it looks like that is under the parking lot, how would that be different from, we put water into the system, and it will be saturated into the surrounding land, with the exception of an overflow, versus rain garden? And is there any impact of evaporation? Does that help the system out somewhat, having surface evaporation versus an interred system?
So, I'll start with the first question, is, there is evaporation, but it's minimal, 'cause it's not gonna, the idea is that this system has to drain down in 72 hours, so if it's bright and sunny for those 72 hours, maybe you get some, if it's cloudy, probably not a whole lot. So, that, to that question, the groundwater and soils, the soils are, it's typical New England, San Yom, compact till, so it's not like sand, doesn't go quickly, but it's not like clay, it's not gonna go too slow, and the groundwater is deep enough that it's, I don't recall the total depth, but I believe it's a good five or six feet below the lower area, and so, we have two feet of separation where we have our chambers now. I don't anticipate that we're gonna have too much issue having that five, the two feet of separation that's required, if, wherever we put the pond.
Yeah, my question is regarding having pressure built up if we have a lot of, and have that pressure pushed back into lower areas of the current structure, and any additions that we put in.
Yeah, it'll, there's not gonna, it'll infiltrate, but not in a, again, it's not gonna go quickly, but it's not gonna go slowly.
No, the second floor.
In a lot of ways, it's actually really good soil for treating the water, in the sense that it takes its time, and all the fines can settle out as much as possible.
But it has, yes, too.
Thank you.
Like you say, I mean, we've got to answer some of the 12 that happened. Any other questions? All set?
Also.
Okay, great. It is a public hearing, does anyone from the public have any questions, comments? If not, I guess, do we wanna continue? Or do you have any comments, Jean?
So, I could probably just weigh in on a few things.
Sure, definitely.
Since you didn't get my report yet, so, this, the application plans have gone out to all the departments, boards, and commissions as required. The Board of Selectmen did weigh in at its last meeting that it had no concerns with proposed development in the groundwater protection district, and that was acting as water commissioners. Obviously, we'll wanna provide everyone with the updated stormwater management plan when we receive that. Also, Conservation Commission, DPW, and Board of Health Agent as well have weighed in on that. So, it seems like there's not a big concern with creating the additional impervious in the groundwater protection district, provided the stormwater management standards are met. I did provide you all the other staff comments that we received, and we were actually ready to recommend approval this evening, until we found out last night, I think, that the groundwater, or the stormwater management plan was changing. So, we will need to get that plan back in place and have that reviewed, and then provide new recommendations to the board. So, we're hoping we can get something by the middle of July, and then potentially looking at continuing the public hearing for Tuesday, August 29th. I'm sorry, I did write August 28th in your report, and that is the wrong date, that's Monday. So, it would be Tuesday, August 29th, at 6:35 PM, if people can make that meeting work for everybody. So, that would be my recommendation then, and if something changes and the design takes longer, we would need to still call it to order that evening and continue it to a later date, so, but I think that gives, you know, gives a good window for everybody to work on an alternate plan and see how that goes.
Good. Sounds great. That time works for you people, I guess. Great. And Wilson, great. We have a motion then to continue the public hearing until Tuesday, August 29th at 6:35 PM. Sub move.
Second.
Second, Sue. Any discussion, all in favor? Great, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll just need a couple minutes to set up in-between hearings, because we have somebody remoting in, so Janai needs to get that set up.
I skipped on the last one.
Mary is the same. Mary.
Focus on everybody.
Norman, Norman. You never should have crossed where it...
It should be a...
No.
Nine and a ten.
Yeah, it's nine before.
Or it's 10, and then the nine.
Ten plus nine.
Okay.
Can you all see?
Two.
I'm glad you...
I think you're good.
I think we'll be all right.
Andrew, can you just say something, so I can make sure we can hear you?
Turn on the mic.
Yeah, we can hear you, and thank you. Oh, see, that screen's doing that weird thing again, so we won't be able to share the screen, so...
That's what I brought from Ford.
Yeah. I don't know why it does that with the go-to meeting lately, but...
Okay, we're opening the public hearing a little late, but Sue, do you wanna read the public hearing?
Yeah, just a little pointer.
Did you give him the pointer?
In accordance with the provision of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 27th, at 6:45 PM in the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, or by virtual means if circumstances warrant, in accordance with the applicable law, on the application of the Michael Chisla Trustee for the property located at 150 Charlton Road. The applicant requests site plan approval as required by the Sturbridge zoning bylaw, Article 19, Site Plan Review, to allow the construction of an 8,000-square-foot industrial building anticipated to be occupied by a designer slash manufacturer or similar industrial use and related site improvements at 150 Charlton Road, Sturbridge, as shown on the plans and materials submitted. A copy of the site plan and application can be inspected on the Sturbridge Town website at www.sturbridge.gov backslash Planning Board, backslash Pages, backslash Recent Filings, or arrangements can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508, or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted in person and may be conducted via remote means if circumstance warrant. In accordance with applicable law, this means the members of the public body, as well as members of the public, may access this meeting in person or via virtual means at global.gotomeeting.com backslash join backslash 472675877. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best effort, we will post on, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive recording of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
Very good. Thank you very much. Want to proceed?
We've got last one, we're talking land survey, and also with me is Eric from Tolberg Land Survey, and Dan Prowdy, one of the trustees, and the Chisla brothers, Michael, and I apologize, Andy, and...
Andy.
Andy. Property owners. Property is on 150 Charlton Road. Existing condition, this is the existing conditions plan, in red is the boundary of the property, contains approximately 6.18 acres. Zoning in this district requires, industrial park district requires a two-acre zoning, so we exceed the required minimum. The existing property also contains an existing cell tower with a lease agreement across the abutting property. Currently, the property contains an existing wet meadow with a perennial stream running through it, and also subsequent 25, 50, 100-foot state buffers, and also the 200-foot local buffer that impacts placement and construction of the property. There's an existing tree line in this area here, where there's the wet meadow. Funny, the abutting property is a Sturbridge sales shop, and behind the property is where the solar panels are. There's additional... There's additional industrial development and commercial development further down the street. We had, in 2020, we had applied for an Anrad mine to lock in the wetland locations. Subsequent to that, our plans that we're presenting here tonight have gone through the conservation, CETA order conditions for the property. Of it. Put it over, and just went through what we are proposing to you. On our grading sheet, I've kind of just shaded in, this is where we're proposing the 8,000-square-foot building, A, to be the paved areas, and obviously the green shaded areas on the property. What we're proposing is a subsurface infiltration system to collect runoff from the paved areas. Prior to discharging into that infiltration system, we are collecting with deep-sunk catch bases into a series of manholes and pipes, and we were proposing two proprietary hydrodynamic separators, storm scepters, one here and one on the low part of the, part of the property. In order to, one of the reasons we've gone with these infiltration, again, with the proximity to wetland areas is always a concern with having open water. We have above-the-surface pension pond, but that also hinders our development potential if we have open water, and also it attracts species away from the wetland areas and eventually becomes a nuisance, not inviting habitat for them to live. The property proposes utility connections out to Charlton Road. We are proposing to have pressure sewer connection here with water and fire services to it. Landscaping, have a little in the front, additional trees in the area that have been graded on the side. Trying to retain as much as we can on the property to the antique shop. Fortunately, we are pressed by where the resource jurisdictional areas are. It's pushed the project to the edge. We're proposing a curb cut here with the one-way traffic to allow access around the building. For the industrial use, we required, or every employee, or two parking spaces you need is one employee. So what we've generated is, we have actually 16 parking spaces here in the minutes to the memorandum that Jean had prepared. Parking spaces on the property. And we located our dumpster in the back. One of the revisions we had, we had the dumpster located in this corner. That was in a setback. We relocated it to the edge. Our lighting plan, we're proposing light poles along the perimeter of the parking, and then wall packs on the building. Especially in front of here, we're proposing a loading area for a larger loading dock area, four-foot drop, and then another at-grade door in the back. I did one van-accessible parking space in the front. One of the issues that we had with conservation was they were concerned with lighting and our development by cutting trees out that we are introducing more light into the meadow. So they wanted us to provide property line, which we proposed. On the drainage, the, on the areas where we're coming in to fill along the edge, so again, surface drainage, cover it. We need to meet our groundwater separation, so we have a sizable amount of fill on this portion of the property. Posing guardrail everywhere the grade is greater than, going over the edge. And obviously, the edge of all the pavement has curbing to direct runoff into the property. We have someone from Viness, Arsenal's online, I didn't know if he wanted to chime in. I'll go to the, another. They are showing access to the property because they have done a traffic assessment of the property.
I don't think it's decided.
So we have a stop control here with the flow around, so I'm going to pass the ton off to Andy if he's got any inputs from a traffic perspective.
I have, hi, everyone. I have nothing specific to add, but I do have a presentation if the board would.
Yeah, it was likely, have any questions on this before, on the other, on the site before we go to the track?
I think we're back.
Okay, we'll go through the presentation then. Sure, go ahead.
While we have him.
Sure.
Can everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Andrew Arsenal, business address 35 New England Business Center Drive in Andover, and I am representing the Nassau Associates. We performed the transportation impact assessment for the project, and tonight I just want to give a very brief overview of the study before making myself available for any specific technical questions you may have later in the evening. As a starting point, we prepared the study in consultation with the town and Mastod, and the study itself is consistent with statewide and industry standards for the preparation of these reports. The data that forms the basis of the assessment was collected earlier this spring, and based on our technical review and analysis, we found three key takeaways. First, the project itself would operate at acceptable conditions, with some minor queuing that would be contained within the site without impeding traffic along Route 20. We did not find any safety deficiencies along Route 20 in the vicinity of the project site, and lastly, we observed that the available lines of sight exceeded the recommended distances for safe operations. Just to very briefly orient ourselves, as I'm sure many are aware, the project site's located along the west side of Route 20, about opposite Gifford Road and the gas station, and a little bit south of the center at Hobbs Brook. Moving back to the project specifics, the project is expected to operate as an approximately 8,000-square-foot space, assumed for a medical device manufacturer. We base the trip generation off a similar land use and estimated just over 30 trips bidirectionally during the peak morning and evening rush hours, which is about one additional trip, one additional vehicle trip every other minute along the roadway. Based on review of the census data for Sturbridge employees, we estimated that the bulk of the site traffic would be oriented to and from the south. Again, as I had mentioned briefly in my introduction, we're predicting an overall level-of-service grade of C for vehicles exiting the driveway, which is representative of acceptable operating conditions. Finally, we developed our recommendations. These are common to many projects, and they just seek to provide and maintain safe and efficient operations for the site, for all users. I will say the majority of these recommendations are reflected on the site plans. The first three here are ensuring that the driveway will be constructed to Mastod standards, in that the internal circulating drives are wide enough to accommodate both parking and maneuvering. And these last few seek to ensure that we have the appropriate manual-on-uniform traffic control devices signs on the site, that the pedestrian paths inside the site are ADA compliant, and that, as I mentioned, those sightlines remain open from vegetation in the summertime and from snow in the wintertime. Again, I want to be respectful of everyone's time, so if it pleases the board, I'd like to hand back to Mr. Proudie for the others, presenters, but I am available for any questions you may have. Thank you all for your time and your patience.
Good, thank you.
I'll open it back to the board.
Okay, we'll start with questions from the board. Jane, do you have any questions, comments?
My one question involved Andrew, so perfect timing. On the entry radius, if I'm on Route 20 and I want to take a right into the site, I kind of go perpendicular, but I kind of more make an acute angle. I don't know if that radius could be increased.
It's a 30-foot radius going this.
That's the 30-foot radius right there? I know that this is a DOT coordination thing.
There isn't.
100% I hear that. It's just my comment, thinking, you're coming down Route 20, you've got to slow down quite a bit to make that acute turn. It could be, it doesn't need to be a 24-foot throat there, you know what I mean?
Understood. I think Mastod's, we can take a look at that.
Yeah, and it's totally up to MastDOT at the end of the day, and you get what you get.
I know that they, I'm sorry, I know that they have been pushing for 24s, but we can, we will work with them during the access permit.
Yeah, totally. I mean, nobody wants gratuitously large curb cuts on Route 20. This specific instance where you're coming in at a bit of an acute angle instead of a perpendicular, and I know that your throat is perpendicular, you didn't design it poorly, it's just the way the site lays out. Maybe they let you do a 40-foot radius instead or something, say, but I don't know how your property lines work, actually, as you get closer, so.
We're tight.
Yeah, you are tight there. Anyway, that was my only comment, otherwise, thank you.
Great, Jane, thank you very much. Wally?
No, nothing.
Sue? Taylor?
I just, I'm seeing here that maximum building height, 35 feet, is that roughly what we're going to be looking at?
Yes.
Just making sure it's not going to rob any solar potential, because you're on the southwest edge of it.
Correct, yes.
That's all I had.
Great. We good, Brad?
So I see the addition of the trees on the right-hand side that should hide some of the visual from Route 20, right? And is there, are there trees on that left-hand side of the entrance there now, currently? I can't remember.
This is wooded right here. This is, we have, this is all trees to remain.
Okay, are there, we would have put down the front of the driveway, though. That's what I'm, yeah.
Well, we can't, that distance-wise, we can't provide somebody here, providing some additional trees along this side. We're not proposing anything right here.
Are the ability to add there, or we're unable to add trees there?
Going to have the existing.
Okay, so.
So we're just going to minimize our existing tree canopy here.
Okay.
So the need to plant additional trees.
At that point, okay.
We'll retain existing vegetation.
Okay, correct.
Very good. Dave?
My question was answered already by Dwayne over there.
Great.
Great minds. It's about the radius, particularly with large articulating vehicles, combination units.
It is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment or ask any questions? If not, Jane, do you have some summary comments here?
Yes, so we did send out the application and plans for staff review, and we received all the comments back, which were provided to the applicant. Nothing major was noted. I also did reach out to MastDOT, and it appears that they will be allowing unrestricted access in and out of the site, so it won't be, you know, right-hand turn only or anything like that. Obviously, they'll have finalized the MastDOT approval process, and, excuse me, also, that is correct, I have a typo in the report, but I actually am showing 15 parking spaces and one loading space.
There's one, there's a space.
There's one that's pretty tight.
There's one space, it's the size, it's just in front of the dumpster.
Yeah, so I didn't count that one because I don't think, I think it's a little sketchy.
Sketchy, but it's just.
Yes, it is. I think an employee or something, yeah, right, exactly. So that was the difference. I actually went back and forth with your office a little bit on the parking count, so. But all in all, it meets the criteria. The, as noted, the Conservation Commission has approved the project, the Design Review Committee has approved the project, the peer review was done through the Conservation Commission because it went there first, so they served as the Stormwater Authority. So I am recommending approval with conditions. All of the proposed conditions have been provided to the applicant, and no concerns were noted, and I can read them, but you all have them, so whatever you prefer.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary to read them. Does anyone on the board have any additional questions or comments? If not, we'll have a motion then to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Second, Wally, any discussion, all in favor? Okay, can we have a motion then to approve the site plan with the conditions listed?
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion, all in favor? Close that one? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Sure, wouldn't they have any in there?
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Well, we're zoning for that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is reorganization of the board. Would you just annually choose a new or the same? It's up to you, chairman and clerk.
Yes, so for those new members on the board, the chair obviously is Charlie, and the assistant, excuse me, vice chair slash clerk is Sue Waters. I didn't know if you wanted to make any changes or if you're fine with the way that is, but we do need a central Mass Regional Planning Commission representative, because that was Jeff. So we absolutely have to fill that position, and before anyone goes, we do have new forms for the Registry of Deeds that have to be signed because we have new members as well. So I don't know if we're inclined for any changes, so I'll just ask, is there a nomination for chair?
I nominate Charlie.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Sue. All right, so nominated by Dane, seconded by Sue to nominate Charlie. Charlie, would you accept that nomination?
I would, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any additional nominations for chair? All right, seeing none, all in favor of Charlie remaining as chair.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, seven to zero. And so the next is vice chair slash clerk. Do we have any nominations for that position?
I nominate Sue.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. Sue, would you accept that nomination? All right. Are there any other nominations for vice clerk, vice chair slash clerk, sorry? Seeing none, all in favor of Sue Waters remaining in that position?
Hi.
All right, very good. And now the last one that we need to fill is the rep for the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. So it's not that heavy of a lift. We do get local planning assistance hours for attendance at those meetings. They have started meeting in person again, although I did notice the last quarterly meeting, they also offered a remote option. So basically, the requirement is a quarterly meeting, and if you cannot attend, you can always ask somebody else to attend in your place, and they talk about things that are significant to the region, sometimes the Transportation Improvement Plan or other initiatives that are ongoing. There is an annual dinner meeting, and sometimes they have special events. So is somebody willing to do that?
I can't, I'm sorry.
I'm pointing at it, I want somebody willing to do that.
I have so much going on at work that.
I know.
I would have, I just, I can't, I'm sorry.
What about anybody else? Wally, you're pretty full and.
I'm really full with everything else going on.
All right, so this end. Dave, Brad, Taylor?
Five.
Dave?
I had to make.
We're going to have to draw straws.
No, I'm paying for Jeff being my cousin. I mean, I'll take it, but I need some, you know, reserve help for sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because this is, even just Tuesday nights is a bit for me every other Tuesday, so.
And it's only quarterly, so it's only, it's only, it's perfect. Should we?
Good motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint Taylor as the representative to CMR PC.
Second.
All in favor? Great, congratulations.
Thank you, sorry we had to pull teeth on that one.
Congratulations slash thank you.
Welcome to the board.
Very good. Okay, anything else on your town plan update?
I do, I have a few more things. So Noble Energy, so after much work with MastDOT in getting the roundabout design to 16% design, it was very apparent there were significantly. to 16% design, it was very apparent there were significant land takings that needed to occur on the side of the bank and Seven Hills and 198 Charlton Road. And the property owners weren't really happy with it. They were certainly willing to work with the town, but Mast DOT handed it over to the town to do the takings, which would have had to go to a town meeting. And so we kind of pushed back a little bit, saying that we thought it was kind of an unrealistic expectation on part of the town and on part of the developer. We did enlist the help of our state representatives and our state senators, and we had another meeting with Mast DOT, and the head of the public-private partnership unit came out from Boston. So during that meeting, Robin Grimm, myself, and Heather Blakely attended, and we, once again, I raised the issue of couldn't you consider the signal as temporary mitigation? And then when you do our corridor study, you could remove the light because the applicant is paying, the developer is paying for the signal. So lo and behold, somebody from District 6, I believe, said, oh, we actually have precedent for that because we just did that recently. So after, it didn't go that quickly, but that's kind of the summary. So at the end of the day, they committed to working with us to go back to the signalized intersection. The developer agreed to pay for that. We received a letter of support from Mast DOT to amend our Mass Works grant again, so we've reverted back now to using the grant that I received for design of the signalized intersection. So it appears that we are moving in the right direction. The Travel Plaza will be opening up under stop sign controls, just as the warehouse, the manufacturing facility you just approved. And the EV center will not be opening until the signalized intersection is installed and/or other mitigation is in place. I think what you'll see also coming down the road is Amazon had to put money into a fund to do improvements around 49 fiscal Picker Road intersections. So we might actually see something long range might actually be a roundabout or something else there. But short-term, I think you might see a turnaround there. So depending on what they decide to do there will depend on when the EV Discovery Center can open. But finally, I feel like we are all on the same page after a million hours of everybody's time. So onward and upward, we just, and we are entering into a new contract with solely engineering, who is designing back now to the signalized intersection, and we will move forward on that. So that is hopefully done as far as transportation improvements. And then All Rig, which is Starbucks Convenient MD, has filed with Conservation Commission, but they failed to notify their abutters, so the commission could not open the hearing the other night. So that will be at the next meeting after the abutters are notified. And they have had their buildings approved by the Design Review Committee, and they're going back with their sign package on the July 17 meeting. They are still working with Mast DOT. I've been involved in several meetings over the past six months or so, and this discussion is still ongoing as to what might be required there for mitigation. And I think that they were maybe thinking the roundabout might help that effort, but I think the signal will probably provide some gaps. But it's looking like there will be a dedicated left-hand turn into the site. So if you were coming from the west and going in, there will be a turning lane, but exiting the property looks right now like it will be a right-hand turn only. So they are still working with Mast DOT. I suggested we get a little further along with Mast DOT. Mast DOT won't approve it until it goes through the site plan process, but I'd rather know we're getting close to some kind of an agreement before we go there. So I think at the end of August, potentially even on the senior center meeting, we might see opening the public hearing for that project as well. So they will also need a special permit for some of the signage because there are additional signs. But the Convenient MD signs are rather large, but the Starbucks signs are pretty close to compliant with the square footage, but there's extra signs because of the drive-through and things like that. So those are the main things. The next thing, we do have a meeting scheduled for July 11th. However, nobody met the deadline to advertise for any public hearings, so we have nothing pending unless an A and R comes in. I'll probably just send you a notice that we will be canceling that meeting. And actually, as of right now, I have nothing on deck for the 25th, but that's far away, so that could change. And I think that's about all I have right now.
Good, thank you very much. Yes.
Jean, when will Noble be able to hold it? Is there a subject date?
So right now, we're waiting for the 61 findings to be issued, which is a written document from the state that specifies the conditions under which they can operate. So we're waiting for that document. We expect to get that sometime this week. Once they get that, they can tie into the utilities in the street. Until that was, that's been part of the holdup. They have not been able to connect to the water in the sewer or the stormwater until they get the 61 findings. Once we get that, they can be issued their water and sewer connection permits, which the state just put comments in the portal at the end of last week, so they need a couple of minor things. So a lot of it will hinge on when that permit gets granted and how quickly they can tie in. They are pretty much ready to go. However, they did divert some of their restaurant equipment to a facility in Connecticut because they weren't sure when they might be able to open. So as soon as they get that, we'll be working with them to see what we can do. The site's in fantastic shape on that side and ready to be fit up on the inside, so I don't know. Labor Day might be optimistic.
I'd say.
And how about Cheetos or Guido's?
So they're, they were bringing in kitchen equipment over the weekend, and they, it seems like they have a big push over there to get things done. A lot of their holdup was kitchen equipment during COVID. We've had so many issues with backordered products, including even stormwater pipes. People are still having difficulties getting. So they've been working really hard over there, so I know they're anxious to get open, but no, no anticipated date.
But this summer?
They're hoping. They're hoping. Yeah, I'm sure they want to open as soon as they can. They have a lot of money tied up in the property, so.
Jean, have you heard anything more about the market of why the cannabis shop, is it still?
They still cannot find a meat cutter. They've made offers to several people and think that they have an agreement, and then for whatever reason, it backs out, one had to back out due to a family issue. The challenge they're having is, you know, it's a skill set that not a lot of people have right now. It's pretty hard to find a butcher that can also manage the shop, so. So they are trying. If you know of anyone looking to be a meat cutter, send them their way because that's the big issue.
All new business? Jane, do you have any old and new business?
While we're asking Jean all the questions, there's a Mexican restaurant that was going in, in Shaw's Plaza. How's that doing?
That's.
Is that open yet?
No, it's not open yet. So they, everything's been approved, and they are kind of underway working over there, but it will be some time for them to, before they can open. I know everybody's excited about that. The auto parts did open.
Yep.
So stay tuned.
Great. So the meeting on July 11th is not yet canceled. You're going to send us an update at some point?
Right, just in case an A and R or something comes in, but I wouldn't, there won't be any public hearings. It's too late.
And then 7:25, you also might cancel, but that's still on the books as of right now.
That's still on the books.
And 8:15, is that already canceled because we're all going to the ballgame?
8:15 we need to cancel because Woo sucks. So we'll have to figure out what comes in. I think we're in kind of a strange position this year that we have a lot of big projects that we've been working on, but we don't really have, other than the All Rig project, we don't have new projects coming down that I'm seeing in the near future, so, which is good. Gives us a chance to catch our breath and.
Go to the beach?
Well, get caught up on some other things that we're, we happen to be working on in the office, like the historic preservation plan and getting the housing trust up and running and things like that. So don't think we're not busy. We're scrambling, but just fortunately for you, it's summer, and we don't, I don't see a lot of applications coming, maybe until the end of August, so.
And then one last thing on the signalized intersection. Do you, I kind of forget, how does that impact Hall Road, or does it?
It really doesn't, other than it will give some gaps for people to get out of Hall Road and kind of queue up to the signalized intersection. So I think in that way, it does help. We'll have to see what the corridor study brings, but I think it'll be, you know, 10, 15 years down the road.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember because we had looked at that so long ago, and I was focused more on that roundabout. But they're basically, it's just Hall Road is there and that is what it is. Okay.
Question, conceptually, is, are we ultimately looking to do like a series of rounds about that corridor section?
Well, that. We don't really know yet. We'll have to see what DOT's corridor study shows, but I can tell you that their ICE analysis, their intersection control evaluation criteria has changed recently, and it is coming out more and more in favor of roundabouts as being safer. It slows people down. If you get into a crash, you're not going as quickly, so there are less injuries, less idling, less pollution. So a big issue is, you know, the amount of right-of-way they have. So if you look at improvements they've done recently in Millbury, there's, there are a lot of roundabouts.
And they typically.
No, they won't. So it will be the state. So because this was triggered by development, we had this, Amazon, and the other warehouse in Charlton all at the same time. So it triggered Mast DOT requiring, in my opinion, extreme amounts of mitigation from applicant in Sturbridge that we had never seen in the past. And I think it was just the perfect storm. Everything came in at once and, you know, I think it was the luck of the draw. I kept saying someone's going to break the camel's back. Well, I guess it was Noble and Amazon broke the camel's back, so.
Is the entrance to Starbucks like directly across from Exremar? Is that basically where it's going to be?
It's in that vicinity, but it will.
Or people are going to turn right out of Starbucks, and then they're going to immediately go left into the Exremar so they can turn around instead of going.
Yeah, it won't be that easy to do. Trust me, DOT will make sure that it's because the curb cut leaving is going to be angled such that you probably do some damage to your tires if you try to pull that stunt, but they are working with Mast DOT on that now, so.
That section of road, I remember elevation rise.
Yes.
So there's some.
Sightlines are actually perfect where the curb cut is proposed, so it exceeds the thresholds required.
My concern is particularly the speeds there. Usually, I know it's posted, I think 40 or 50, somewhere's in there, but realities, people have a tendency to operate the difference.
Right.
Definitely.
Okay. Wally, any?
I'm all set.
No?
I'm all set.
All set, great. Motion to return then? So moved. Second, all in favor. Very good.